Members, good morning. We're entering the second session on labor manpower development and retirement protection. First of all, I invite Mr. Chris Sun, Secretary for Labor and Welfare, to give us a brief opening, and then we will take questions, and please press your request to speak button. I am grateful for Mr. Chris Sun and his team for attending today. Thank you. Good morning, Chairman and members. Now, I would like to use the next five minutes to give you a briefing. The recurrent spending on labor and manpower developments in two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four is estimated at three thousand two hundred twenty million dollars, representing an increase of five hundred fifty million dollars over the revised estimate of two thousand six hundred and seventy million last year. Now, our major work this year. Abolition of offsetting mechanism of the MPF system. As the government has mentioned on multiple occasions, we will implement the abolition no later than two thousand twenty-five. Now, the most pressing work ahead is to establish the information technology system so that we can fulfill our pledge to offer a subsidy to employers of more than thirty-three billion dollars for twenty-five years. This is the more pressing work ahead. We have to have this system to implement the subsidy scheme. And next, statutory minimum wage. Starting the first of May this year, the minimum wage will be the rate will be raised to forty dollars per hour. The Chief Executive has invited the Minimum Wage Commission or the MWC to study how to enhance the review mechanism of statutory minimum wage, including the review cycle, how to improve efficiency, and balancing a host of factors such as the minimum wage level and sustained economic development. The MWC is required to submit a study report by the end of October this year, subsequent to which the government will follow, will chart the way forward according to the recommendations. The third area of concern is review of the continuous contract requirements under the Employment Ordinance, that is the four-one-eight requirements. The Labor Advisory Board is discussing the matter. When there is a consensus, we can take the next step. I look forward to receiving hearing more progress made on this in this area by the Labor Advisory Board. Now, the fourth area is the enhancements measures for processing applications to the protection of wages on insurgency fund. Now, applicants don't have to apply for legal aid through law firms on the list of the PWIF or private legal practitioners. Applications can be made. We can at least short, we can at least shorten the processing time by up to twelve weeks. Now, on OSH occupational safety and health, the government will continue to step up its efforts on publicity, education, inspection, and law enforcement. With the multi-pronged approach, we can better deal with OSH concerns, especially fatal industrial accidents. Now, on Wednesday, we will resume second reading debate on the OSH legislation amendments. We look forward to drastically enhancing the penalty for OSH offenses, which will be very useful for protecting employees' rights. Now, pilot's rehabilitation program for employees injured at work. Some four hundred million dollars have been set aside to roll out a three-year pilot's rehabilitation program. We will first focus on employees injured at work in the construction industry with the sick leave period is longer than six months or six weeks. The employee will be eligible for the program. We will enhance the program drawing on the reference. Now, and also the instruction or guidance notes on prevention of heat stroke at work. We are entering summertime. Now, we hope we can roll out the new guidance notes on prevention of heat stroke in April or May. Now, the Greater Bay Area Youth Employment Scheme. We have received very good response from the pilot scheme, so starting this year, we will regularize the program. Our target is a thousand Hong Kong youth under the scheme who can gain work experience in the Bay Area. On employment supports for ethnic minorities, this is an area we attach much importance to. We're going to regularize the case management model under the Racial Diversity Employment Program. And also, the Labor Department will take lead by employing more ethnic minority employees in our offices. And also on shrouding for talents and talent training. Three things. We will enhance enticing talents from overseas and the mainland to fill our talent gap. This is a clear direction. And also through retraining and the Continuing Education Fund, we will enhance the quality of our local talents to help them transition or better yet, upgrade the skills so that they can take up jobs requiring more skills and professional knowledge. This will enhance their sense of gains as well as their employment remuneration. And now, we are going to start a new round of manpower projection by the end of this year, and we will complete the projection by the end of next year. This is very important for me to long-term work. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary. Thirteen members have pressed the button to speak, including Dr. Johnny Ng, Dennis Leng, Dr. Lo Wei Quo, Lu Chong Hong, Dr. Frankie Yan, Kenneth Leng, Dr. So Chen Wen, Lam Chan Sing, Chow Si Chung, Professor Chen Wen Kwong, Quoc Wei Keng, Nick C. Lem, and Dr. Priscilla Leng. Five minutes for each member. We'll start with Dr. Johnny Ng.
I'd like to follow up on the question of zero nine zero. It's about the Continuing Education Fund. The number of people receiving the fund has increased. During post-COVID era, some of the courses provided relating to language and finance, the outcome has been quite good. Thirty percent of the courses have to be held physically. Are there measures to enhance the course arrangement also? There is plan to extend the coverage of the fund for non-mainstream courses relating to philosophy, et cetera, for those who are in the media or education industry. Do you have plans to continue to enhance the CEF which will be beneficial to the government in terms of striving for talents? Thank you. Secretary, I'll ask my colleague to elaborate on the details later. The Continuing Education Fund is an important tool for people in Hong Kong to enhance their skills. We have enhanced the subsidy amount. Each person will get up to twenty thousand Hong Kong dollars under the fund. For those aspiring to enhance their skills, this fund will be useful. The coverage under the fund in terms of courses is extensive. As to whether the physical courses can all be switched to online courses, I'll ask my colleague to elaborate. However, physical courses will be very helpful still. This is topic concerned under the Public Accounts Committee. That is, we talked about whether the inspection and the requirement of courses were up to standard. The coverage of the courses can change or be modified as times change. I'll ask my colleague Permanent Secretary to elaborate. Thank you, Chairman. As mentioned by the Secretary, we hope that the Continuing Education Fund can keep abreast with the times in terms of the teaching mode. In two thousand twenty-one, in October that year, we allow course providers to apply for the fund if they want to provide online courses. In terms of teaching mode, there is the necessity to combine physical and online courses. How do we monitor the teaching mode and the number of hours of the courses? We will look into it. It hasn't been very long since online courses have been provided. For course providers or organizations that apply for online courses, we will keep track of the number and will continue to listen to the views and see how we can enhance the relevant measures. In terms of the type of courses to be provided, we do not ask the courses to be implemented in a certain way, but we ask the courses to be provided up to standard. There are certain indicators. There are over four thousand types of courses provided under CEF. We believe that the CEF will have positive effect in terms of upgrading the general competencies of workers in Hong Kong. Any follow-up questions? No. For courses not covered under the CEF, perhaps you can provide suggestions after the meeting for the administration's consideration. Next, Mr. Dennis Leng. I'd like to follow up on question number zero four six. In two thousand nineteen, some charity organizations has done some studies in terms of the labor power released by domestic foreign helpers. They have contributed about ninety-eight point nine billion dollars. And over three hundred and forty thousand domestic helpers have provided services to local households, and a lot of local families hired domestic helpers to take care of elderly people. It is expected that by two thousand sixty-nine, the number of domestic helpers will increase to six hundred thousand. Will the administration set up task force to monitor the service quality of the sector? Another question, as at January this year, there are three thousand two hundred and twenty-three licensed employment agencies, of which one thousand three hundred and ninety-seven are employment agencies for domestic foreign helpers. About four hundred of them got the accreditation from Filipino or Indonesian consulate generals. We have seen some sort of local licenses. These regulations are for employment agencies that may got their licenses revoked. For incidents that happened in the industry, mostly related to employment agencies not authorized or accredited by the consulate's general. Do you have any measures in place to avoid job hopping in the sector to enhance the quality of domestic helpers so that local families are able to hire better quality domestic helpers? Thank you. Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Leng. Foreign domestic helpers are important to local families. There are about three hundred and thirty thousand of them. The peak level there were about three hundred and ninety thousand of them in Hong Kong. It is believed that the number will continue to be on the rise. There is a dedicated branch under the Labor Department to oversee foreign helpers issues. It has just been set up over the past few years, and we see some successful outcomes of the work. We were able to talk to the relevant consulate generals and labor groups. And during COVID, we saw the benefits of having this dedicated branch or working group. In terms of employment agencies, we are carrying out consultation now. In terms of the code of conduct of employment agencies, there are a series of suggestions, and they involve the work of foreign domestic helpers, including how we can better address the issue of job hopping by domestic helpers. On the issue of job hopping as the society resumes normal, we saw the lifting of travel restrictions by domestic helpers. We hope that we are able to address the concerns of employers in this sense. Of course, we have to have reasonable arrangement to take care of the feelings of domestic helpers as well. We hope that with the implementation of the code of conduct, that the issues can be better addressed. Any follow-up questions? When will the code of conduct be rolled out to enhance the quality of domestic helpers and to safeguard local families that hire foreign domestic helpers? Thank you for the question. As mentioned by the Secretary, currently, we are carrying consultation for the Code of Practice for Employment Agencies. We have earlier consulted the panel, and the consultation will run until meet May. It will last for eight weeks. Apart from consulting foreign helpers, we will also consult employers. After the consultation period, we will analyze the views we have collected, and hopefully, we can give an update on the our work to the members by then. Fifteen members have requested to speak after Dr. Lo Wei Quo has spoken. I'll draw the line there. Dr. Lo.
I'd like to follow up on question number one-one-six. It is about manpower development. The Labor and Welfare Bureau has a very narrow scope of work. In terms of manpower development, we are talking about workers from all classes of life, and we are facing a shortage across various sectors. Apart from manpower, we also have issues in terms of talent and labor force, the size of labor force. These are the challenges that we face in terms of our economic development. I wasn't able to ask a question during the education session just now. However, we do see school closures recently. Some, a school in the Outlying Island is not able to continue operation. And the size of the student population will continue to shrink. In attracting non-local students by universities, should we have measures in place to help VPAT and local universities in this regard? Secretary, you are facing all these issues, and you have to think about how you can coordinate all the efforts to come up with relevant policies. At the end of the day, our Chief Executive has to come up with some solutions. In two thousand fifteen, the government at that time had a population policies report to promote Hong Kong as an Asian metropolis and to make good use of talents so that families can have a good quality life. That was one of the objectives of the then government. However, we are very far away from reaching that target. As mentioned by the Secretary, we're seeing a drop of population, and we only have some seven point three-three million people in Hong Kong now. The continuous decline in population is stealing a blow to the labor force. In twenty-four months, we saw a drop of one hundred forty thousand people in the labor force from December to February. That was a employment rate of three point three percent, and the underemployment rate was one point three percent, and the labor force dropped to one hundred and fourteen thousand. If you continue to close schools and with the decline population of children, how should we deal with the problem? In terms of population policy, what has the administration been doing?
Secretary, Chairman, I thank Dr. Lo Wei Quo for his question. According, as mentioned by Dr. Lo, the three topics are very important: talents, population, and labor. Of course, in terms of population, that is a high-level policy agenda. However, population and labor force are closely related. After the promulgation of the policy address, we have stepped up efforts on attracting talents. We have the Top Talent Path Scheme, and we have been enhancing our existing talent admission scheme. We are attracting more talents to Hong Kong, and we want them to stay here after coming. By staying, they would contribute to our labor force, and that would help. Of course, Dr. Lo was referring to a much wider scope. But under the purview of the Labor and Welfare Bureau, we are doing our best to attract the types of talents that Hong Kong needs and is in shortage of. We are doing that in terms of on the policy level and also in terms of publicity. We understand we have a huge shortage of labor and also a declining working population. So the government is responding appropriately to the community's need. Well, Dr. Lo, I think you have to talk to the Chief Executive himself. Well, I understand this may be beyond the Labor and Welfare Bureau's purview because this is about population policy. Well, I hope the Secretary, the Chief Secretary for Administration, and especially the Chief Executive can proactively tackle this problem. I believe that they will have the will and strength to do it. Thank you. Mr. Michael Look, thank you, Chair. Question seventy-nine. I'm pleased to see that in this year's budget, in terms of occupational safety and health, the government has increased the estimates of expenditure by seventy percent. Well, I sure do hope that on Wednesday, the Amendments Bill concerning OSH offenses would be passed so that we can promote occupational safe and health culture in Hong Kong, and that the employers and employees will work together to achieve that. Now, this is Mr. Kingsley Wong's question. Now, question D and E involve undefined or controversial employment relationship, that is forced self-employment and so on. Over the past four years, there were eight hundred and thirty-three complaints received. So that is just the number received, and that is just the tip of the iceberg. Many people may think that forced self-employment is the norm in the trade, and they would simply go with it. Now, among the eight hundred thirty-three complaints, can the government better delineate or clarify employment's relationship to avoid dubious cases where employees' rights would be undermined? Now, one example is the dancer injured in the Mirror Concert. Now, he had a so-called self-employment contract with the production company. Well, obviously, that wouldn't be the case. How can you say that he was self-employed? He had to follow the instruction of the production company in terms of the costumes and the choreography. Now, Labor Department intervened and is suing the employer. And also, there are lots of forced self-employment cases concerning food delivery platform and also in the logistic trade. Now, a driver with his own vehicle would be asked to provide service for one platform only. Well, that would be very peculiar. If you are self-employed, you should have the freedom to choose to work for another platform. There are simply too many cases to list out here. So I wonder, can the government legislate to regulate dubious employment model? Now, there are also some cases which are obviously an employment's relationship under the existing legislation. So how can the government make the employer and the employees understand that there is actually an existing employment's relationship? Secretary, thank you, Mr. Michael Look. Well, self-employment or employed, they are very clear authorities handed down by the Court of Final Appeal. Clear guidelines or guidance has been laid down on what constitutes an employment's relationship, including whether the employee has control over his work, whether he has to pay for his own tools for the trade, or whether he can choose whenever he works. Oh, but the major difficulty is it is very difficult to be descriptive in terms of law. Well, our existing legislation is already very clear. However, the definition of whether a relationship constitutes employment really varies case by case. Yes, we are all saddened by the concert accident. Now, we have sought advice from DOJ, and we and the Labor Department made a judgment according to the contractual terms. That's why we reached a decision that despite the terms of the contract, the nature of the contract or the relationship was an employment. That's why we prosecuted the employer. Well, I think there are some things that employers and employees can do. For any inquiries, please don't hesitate to reach out to the Labor Relations Division of the Labor Department, and of course, we will do better publicity. Mr. Frankie Yan or Dr. Yan Man Yu.
Thank you. My own question about importation of labor. Now, according to the reply last year, five thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine foreign labors have been imported compared with some three thousand in year two thousand twenty-one. There is a remark, though. Between March and May last year, there was a relaxation measure on importation of care workers. So after the relaxation measures, there were still only five thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine overseas workers imported to Hong Kong through the supplementary labor scheme, and the processing time was as long as five months. Now, members representing different sectors are complaining about the chronic shortage of labor. So how can the government enhance the or shorten the processing time so that more supplementary labor can come to Hong Kong and help address our chronic shortage of labor in many sectors? Secretary, thank you. I thank Dr. Yan Man Yu for his question. Now, my understanding is Dr. Yan was asking about the time required for processing applications under the supplementary labor scheme. From application to granting of approval, it usually takes five months' time.
But there are areas beyond the Labor Department's control. Now, the vetting procedures were laid down or formulated together by the Labor Department as well as the Labor Advisory Board. It has changed over time because of difference needs. Now, after submitting the application, there will be four weeks of local employment or local recruitment process. You have to follow the Labor Department's established requirements, and also we will take into account the actual need of the trade. So altogether, it would take about five months. We understand it is a bit long and we have heard cause that we should shorten the procedures. That we want to be prudent on every segments of the procedure, and we have to make sure that there is a genuine shortage of local supply of the kind of labor. So we will seek to compress the timetable a bit without affecting the prudency. Doctor Yan, well, I would I want to know more about the procedures. Of course, there are many steps and it would lengthen the procedures. The secretary promised to compress the timetable. So when will we have an answer? Can that be done and by how much? And can you tell the Labor Advisory Board the timetable sooner? Well, we have to work it out with the L A B. The supplementary labor scheme is subject to the views of the L A B members. A final decision would be made after seeking their views. So we will go back and visit the matter. Commissioner for Labor, any supplements? Thank you very much. Well, just a just a bit of an elaboration of the existing procedures. Under this scheme, a key process is to conduct local recruitment. We have to do that step very prudently to ensure that local workers are prioritized. That's why we need four weeks. And before that, we need to communicate with the relevant applicants. Now, for applicants who are very well aware of their needs, that would be easier. They would be very certain about the job requirements, so the documents would be very detailed. For new applicants, however, we need to inquire of them the job requirements in detail. And also, we have a requirement that the salary level cannot be lower than the medium salary level of local labors. So we will identify, we will try to identify room for enhancement with the L A B. Thank you. Mister Candy Flan, thank you. Now, question one zero five. The Office of the Hong Kong Talent Engage. Now, concerning the employment arrangements, accommodation, and also child education, the Talent Engage would be responsible for helping our talents. Now, we understand that besides the circumstance of the talent himself, the family members would also be a huge consideration. Well, just like last night, I asked my son where he wanted to have dinner. Now, according to the support measures, the reply says that the support surface would be outsourced to different organizations. So what kinds of organizations or institutions we are talking about? How can they help the overseas talents to adjust to life in Hong Kong? Are they offering one-stop service, or will the spouse or family members or children have to go to other organization for help? Another question is fifty one on the Youth Employment and Training Program or Y E T P. Now, I ask about the percentage of participants completing the pre-job training. However, there is no figure given to me. I'm asking about the completion rates of the course. So can you give me the figure? And also, in the Youth Development Blueprint announced last year, the government mentioned that together with the Employee Retraining Board, there would be better collaboration under the Youth Employment and Training Program. Case manager would help participants to enroll in courses offered by the E L B. So how can that be done?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mister Loong for the question. To respond to your first question on the Office of Hong Kong Talent Engage, there are referral services provided. There are not many staff working in the office. As mentioned in our papers, there will be about thirty to forty staff. They are mostly non-civil servants. But we want to um attract hundreds and thousands of talents. The office is to offer help to talents admitted on accommodation needs and education needs, et cetera. These may not be questions that can be issued by the office. A lot of times, these services are provided in the community, but they are not aware of it. So we can make good use of the office to coordinate efforts of various organizations. On details, I'll ask under secretary or permanent secretary to elaborate. The other two questions is about the Youth Employment and Training Program. I'll defer to my colleagues to elaborate. Miss Kwan?
Thank you. On the work done by the Office of Hong Kong Talent Engage, it will provide a one-stop services. We will liaise with organizations that provide support services on accommodation and employment as well as education in the business sector. For talents who are admitted to Hong Kong, they can, through the office, that is through the one-stop support services provided by us, tell us their requests. And we will do matching and match them with the appropriate organizations and refer their requests to the appropriate organizations to see whether the organizations can provide the relevant services to them. And if the matching is successful, the office will inform the talent who make the requests. So that the personal particulars would be kept within the office and that the personal information will not be disseminated to all the organizations involved. When the matching is successful, for instance, if the talent requires accommodation service or education service, then they can directly liaise with the relevant organization for the assistance. I will ask under secretary or Mister Ho. On the first of April this year, we have with the Employment Retraining Board implemented enhancement measures. Under the Y E T P, um each trainee will be matched with the case manager and depending on the trainees' career development needs and interests, they can enroll in various types of courses. Over seven hundred types of courses are available for the trainees covering various sectors, including information and technology, hotel and tourism sectors. And this enhancement measures have uh were rolled out since the first of April this year. Under Y E T P, after trainees have completed the pre-employment courses, that is the ratio of the number of trainees on the next one of our papers, we have provided the number of trainees who finished or enrolled in the pre-employment courses. And we have given a response in our papers. In terms of the number of employees who have completed the entire courses, we do not have the relevant statistics. I think we you should have the relevant statistics, otherwise, how do you gauge the effectiveness? Next, Doctor So Chen Wang.
Chair, I'd like to thank the administration for the detailed responses to my questions. I'd like to follow up on question number oh seven oh regarding the Greater Bay Area Youth Employment Scheme. I have follow-up questions. I think this is a meaningful scheme and it is necessary for our young people. It opens up another pathway for the young people in Hong Kong and it allows local young people to understand the development of the Greater Bay Area. I see that you have put in a lot of efforts according to your responses and you're willing to spend money. As at the twenty eighth of February this year, you have spent ninety six million dollars of subsidies. Think you have put in a lot of efforts in this regard. However, I do not agree with what the secretary said regarding the successful outcome that you have achieved. Reasons being that, well, if you look at your response, there were twenty thousand applications received and in the end, just about a thousand people was placed into employment, but there were three thousand four hundred and ninety job offers. So not more than thirty percent of the applicants were placed into employment. Regarding the on-job training that lasts for eighteen months, as at the thirty first of January, two hundred and forty of them received the subsidy and only a hundred and sixty five, that is less than sixty seven percent of the um people or participants in the scheme got their contracts renewed and the cities involved in the scheme are mainly Guangzhou and Shenzhen. They account for eighty six percent of the participants. That is the work locations of the participants. I support the regularization of the scheme. I hope that the government can review the scheme and adjust your strategies. According to your responses, those who have completed training and those who have left the scheme, you do not have the relevant information. This is a relatively new scheme. If you do not work on reviewing and enhancing the scheme, it will not be beneficial to the long-term development of the scheme. Will the administration roll out measures to ensure the diversification of the scheme? Thank you, Doctor So for the question. Let me give you some background. When the scheme was first launched, there were about three thousand job offers. At the end, about one thousand ninety one young people in Hong Kong were placed into employment. There were twenty thousand applications received. One person may apply for more than one job, so there may be duplications. With three thousand applications and only one thousand people got a job, well, according to our experience, this is not bad. The Labor Department does job matching every day. It's hard to guarantee hundred percent placement. We think that one thousand among the three thousand applications we've received were able to get a placement. This is quite good. As Doctor So said, most people choose to work in Shenzhen and Guangzhou. And Shenzhen account for two-thirds and Guangzhou accounts for one-fourth. In other Greater Bay Area cities, there are jobs offered to local youngsters as well. As we regularize the scheme, we'll see whether more cities in the Greater Bay Area will be involved or selected by participants. After we've regularized the scheme, we have identified two organizations that have service points um on the mainland to retain the young people who worked there. Through the two organizations, we're able to establish the network in the Greater Bay Area to follow up on the young people who have worked in the Greater Bay Area to see where they go after they have left the jobs placed to them. So through the two organizations, we hope to keep track of the development of the young people, local young people there. Next, Mister Lam Chan saying, I'd like to follow up on questions zero one three, zero three zero and zero seven eight. Zero one three is about the registered work unions. And the number of registered work reunion reunions have dropped compared to two years ago and normally four weeks are required for them to be registered. Even before the wave of newly registered trade unions, normally, the registration procedure could not be finished within four weeks. I'm just wondering whether you can meet this target, that is the four-week target that you said. Zero three zero is a question from Mister Quak Wei Kong regarding the supplementary labor scheme. The administration noted the labor shortage in residential care homes. And you said that three thousand people will be imported under the scheme. There are four thousand applications in the care worker industry and you have approved three thousand imported care workers. Why don't you set up another scheme under the supplementary labor scheme to handle the applications for imported care workers? The Labor Advisory Board is not an obstacle to the administration's work. Well, secretary, you were the commissioner for labor and you have led the work of Labor Advisory Board and under your leadership, some negotiations were able to be achieved between employers and employees representatives. Should you resume some of these schemes under the supplementary labor scheme? For some sectors, well, I understand that you want to first protect or the interests of local workers. Perhaps you can relax the relevant schemes for a three-month period like what you did last year and allow employers and employees to do the negotiations themselves. My last question is on zero seven eight regarding the Greater Bay Area Youth Employment Scheme. The Labor Department or the has put in a lot of resources into the scheme. You mostly are targeting university graduates now. Will you open the scheme to those with associate degrees or with V P E T diploma qualifications? In Shenzhen, there is a service center opened for V P E T for V P E T students. It may not necessarily be ideal for a lot of local students to participate in these schemes because we also need local talents. But I just wonder if you will extend this scheme to students with other education qualifications?
Thank you for your question on.
Thank you for your question on number of registration of trade unions. I would defer to the Deputy Commissioner, Mister Ho. The second question is about special scheme to import care workers for residential care homes. As I have explained on many occasions. It is really a special scheme. As shown. In the past, there would always be a labor shortage in the residential care home sector. And there is no way to meet that gap with our local supply of labor. So that's why we need to import care workers. Since that is a chronic shortage, it is suitable to. Meet the shortfall with a time-limited special scheme. So of course, we would listen to the Labor Advisory Board's views on the details of the scheme. However, because of the chronic shortage, we would not subsume it under the special or supplementary labor scheme. On the youth employment scheme in the Bay Area. At this moment, we still think it is appropriate to limit the scope of the scheme to university graduates in Hong Kong. We know there are voices that we should consider expanding the scope to associate degree holders or VPET programs. Graduates, but at this moment, we are still focusing on university students first. Mister Charles Yu Chong, thank you. My question is zero eight nine about top talent pass schemes figures. Question of Mister Chan Pu Leng. In the initial periods after the implementation of the top talent pass scheme. I advise the government to set a cap for certain trades. For example, for talents. In relation to our development needs, we should not set a cap. And also for trades with a labor shortage. However, the government decided to. Set no limits for the top talent pass scheme. And also, there are no specific figures in terms of the professions. And and the professional qualifications held by these talents. We don't even know where these talents work. And in what trade they work before coming to Hong Kong. So I think you have to give us the figures on their existing employments, the types of job they are doing now. And also the salary level. I am worried that that may be. The the importation scheme would be an overkill. And also, I would like to know the academic achievements of these talents as well as their family background or family composition. Now, this one is my question, zero one two. I want the government to set KPIs for increasing the labor particip- the local labor participation rate. Now, the government said it is not appropriate to set KPIs. However, the government has done a lot in terms of introducing talents. There are many schemes and there is the there is the minimum, there is the KPI of a minimum of thirty-five thousand talents imported. And also eighty million dollars would be spent each year on setting up the talents engaged to serve these overseas talents. But what about promoting the local? Work participation rates? I don't see any determination from the government. You have always been talking about continuing education fund and the ELB only. So can there be KPIs concerning the increase of local supply of labor? Not just on job placement, but also on enhancing women's participation rate in work. Or you can even require subvented organizations to offer positions with flexible working hours. There can also be job. Offers for different age groups, for example, people between the age of sixty to sixty-five, young people. Or. Women as different age. We want to see more resources dedicated to for this purpose. Thank you. First question is on top talent pass scheme. The the design of the scheme is to supplement the existing policy. While we focus on the quality of the talents, we want them to come to Hong Kong to work. The top, uh the talents engage, the top talent engage would. Be at a position to give us the details of the talents after they have come to Hong Kong. There will be data available. Now, after coming to Hong Kong, the talents must. Give us proof that they are recruited to a job comparable to their academic qualification. Otherwise, we would not review their visas. Now, in the last session, we talked about education. We are dedicating hundreds of billions of dollars into education. With view to enhancing our labor quality. We are spending four hundred million dollars on continuing or on the job training. These are all for enhancing the quality of our local labor force. And also, we are enhancing our childcare service. So that women at prime age who wants to work can be released to work. Professor Chan Wing Kwan, thank you. I would like to follow up on my own question, zero um zero seven and ninety-two. Now about the GBA Youth Employment Scheme, according to the reply, as at the close of the application period. Some twenty thousand applications have been received and one thousand and ninety-one were approved. So the success rate is just about five percent. I know some young people may be duplicating their the application on different jobs. But that shouldn't affect the success rate a lot. So the fact is, it's only a small amount of applicants were successfully recruited on to to jobs. So why is that? Is it because of a lack of academic qualifications or professional skills that caused their application to fail? So can the government offer better matching service to make the GBA Youth Employment Program a success? Now, second question, also my question, number ninety-two. This is about the establishments under the immigration departments for processing different. Talent visa schemes. Or under the um for the. Technical, for the admission scheme for uh for the technology talent admission scheme, there are only free. Civil servants handling the application. So why is the establishment so small? Is it because of the small number of application received? And with that kind of establishments, how can you ensure that the vetting procedure is prudent and efficient? Secretary, the first question from Doctor So Chen Wang. Thank you very much, Professor. Now, we are all concerned about the matching issue. Over the past few decades, the labor department has been offering matching service. Or it requires willingness from both parties, that is, the employer and the employee. So the best we can do is to attract more businesses and interested young people to join the scheme. But it really depends on how they match up with each other. Sometimes it is not the problem of the employer. Maybe it is the young people who doesn't want that job offer. So we will try to enhance our service after regularizing the program. Now, second question, the number of. Staff in the immigration's establishments to handle different admission scheme. Well, say for example, the top talent pass scheme, we have, we are receiving more than twenty thousand applications. And we are vetting some ten thousand of them, but the establishment is only some thirty people large. But for some scheme, more people can come, but for other schemes, the vetting procedures are more complicated and long. So more people will be required to handle them. So it really depends on individual schemes. Any follow-up? No, thank you. Mister Kwok Wai Kung, thank you very much. Now, in reply to Mister Peter Shu's question, that is sixty-seven. The government said that the review conducted by the Minimum Wage Commission would be completed by the end of October. And the reports will be submitted to the Chief Executive. Now, I wonder in the report, whether the idea of statutory minimum wage would be incorporated into the. Common prosperity aspiration. Rather than just a tool to catch up with in with inflation. Over the past ten years, the increase of SMW rate is lacking far, has been lacking far behind than inflation. Now, L twenty-nine, my question about gig economy and platform workers protection. The reply says that the government worries. That there would be far-reaching impacts on the economy if there are any policies regarding gig economy or platform workers. Well, I think it is quite the opposite. Platform workers, employers are arbitrarily cutting wages. And also. Curious or workers on delivery platforms are working over duty long hours. So how can we regulate all these? You will ask statistics from the Census and Statistics Departments, but when can you complete the study? Now, question number thirty. For importing generic workers under the supplementary labor scheme. Every year, RCH care workers have been imported. Every year, it shows that the LAB has been very practical in fulfilling our needs. Now, there is this special scheme to import care workers for RCH, which bypassed the role of the LAB. Then problem arise. We have seen overs, we have seen imported care workers being treated poorly and with their wages reduced or cut. Now, how will the government plug the loophole? To prevent. Imported care workers rights being undermined under the special scheme. This will jeopardize the will of overseas care workers to come to Hong Kong. Because even before they come, they will hesitate. Thank you very much. Three questions on review of statutory minimum wage rate. The review to be conducted by the commission is about the system, but it's not about the SMW rate or level. It is about the system itself. Now, when formulating recommendations, the LAB will have or the M. S C will have to work within its terms of reference. Which is to protect low-paying employees. And also ensure competitiveness of Hong Kong's economy. So they will have to work according to their role. The second question was about gig economy. I myself and the labor departments are very concerned about this situation as well. Now gradually, different governments at different places are doing different work. To regulate gig economy or platform economy, some even have legislation. Now, when I visited Singapore, I had a chat with the Ministry of Manpower. So we would make reference to the example from overseas and we would also refer to our own statistics. We will learn from our neighbors as well. So when we have more information on hand, we will start our work expeditiously. On importation of care workers, yes, that is also our concern. As I have explained, the special scheme is to address the chronic shortage of labor in the trade. We haven't bypassed the LAB. We have consulted the LAB, in fact. There are reports recently that some imported care workers were being treated unfairly. The police and also the labor departments have intervened in these cases. If I may add, all these imported care workers have been imported under the supplementary labor scheme as generic workers. Because the special scheme hasn't been implemented yet. Now, for any special schemes in the future and regular schemes, we will apply the same standard. If we see unreasonable reduction of wages, we will prosecute them.
Next, Miss Nixi Lam. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to follow up on question number one, two, four. About unleashing the labor force of female workers. On community babysitters. If the scheme can be implemented smoothly, it can really offer help to female workers. Some of the babysitters find the renumeration too little, about eighteen to twenty-four dollars per hour only. Some of them are only getting thirteen dollars per hour. It is hoped that adjustment can be made in terms of their pay. And you're only considering fifty-three of them and over the eighteen districts, there are only nine hundred and fifty-four quota. Is there room to increase the quota? A number of members have mentioned about the need for manpower and labor force participation. This is going to offer help in the long run to the labor market. By unleashing the labor force of female workers, even after they have given birth. That if they can work in the market, it can really give a lot of help to the market, Secretary. Thank you, member, for the question. We have talked in person. How do we allow female workers to work in the market? Even take up part-time jobs, even though though they may have family commitments. This can help share the burden of labor market. On the childcare services offered in the community, we are looking into it and see how we can enhance the measures. We think that it is important for us to um fine-tune the childcare services. Because it can help us unleash the labor force of female workers. We hope to do more in this regard. Any follow-up questions, Miss Lam? Yes, the business sector, especially large enterprises or corporations. Are willing to provide childcare support services to their workers. Perhaps we do not need resources from the administration to encourage large companies to provide such services. It's like giving a accreditation to the companies. Because this is part of their social responsibilities. Let's see how we can implement it. I don't think we necessarily need administrations' resources in this regard, Secretary. I agree, one or two companies have such thoughts. The administration is willing to offer help or uh give commendations to these companies. Next, Doctor Prilla Sila Leng. I'd like to follow up on question zero zero one. It is a question from Miss uh Chang Kapui. You mentioned the number of complaints regarding the.
You mentioned a number of complaints regarding the employment agencies in your reply. Hong Kong highly relies on foreign domestic helpers. And this allow them to enhance their bargaining power in terms of their wage on postnatal care and childcare. There is a lot of room for us to unleash local labor force. We lack of professional service workers, however, in terms of offering postnatal services and childcare services. The administration should roll out relevant policies to encourage more people to join the industry, especially those who are interested in taking care of elderly people and children. I don't see any strategies in place by the administration. I think we should not wait any longer to roll out the relevant policies. On another note, have you reviewed which sector is lacking the manpower they need? A few years ago, the administration offered pay, but no one was able to take up the work in terms of repairing and maintenance work of lifts. There were some scary accidents, but no one joined the industry. Also, I tried to look for those who can take up gardening work. It's like renovation work. There was no one who is willing to take up these jobs. I think young people may be interested in joining these industries. Well, this is an issue related to our livelihood. In my personal experience, I see that there is nobody taking up these jobs. Even the contractors are saying that they have been failing to look for workers. So my point is, you need a long-term manpower plan. I believe that you need to import workers for various sectors. It's not about whether the business can sustain their operation. It's about a core manpower crunch that we're facing. Secretary, two questions. One is about how we can make use of local talents to provide, say, for example, postnatal services and childcare services. For instance, the Employment Retraining Board offers courses on postnatal services. They offer some really good courses and they allow or they admit students of all ages. We hope to do more in this respect. For those who are looking for more flexible working hours, they can enroll in these courses and we'll do more in promoting these courses. Second question from Doctor Leng is whether we'll have more coordination with the Education Bureau. How about this? I ask my question in a more precise manner. I know that members have asked a lot of questions about education already. People nowadays like to take up casual jobs. However, you need the relevant expertise or skills to take up these jobs, right? Another question is whether you know which sectors are facing a lack of manpower and that you need to import more workers for those sectors. Secretary, let me give a brief response. In the medium term, we will enhance our manpower projection covering jobs related to city planning. For instance, jobs related to drainage or lift maintenance works. So it's really about going through the procedures. Next, Doctor Wendy Hong. My question is also about local labor force. There are a group of people who are waiting for two-way permits in Hong Kong. Their spouses may be Hong Kong residents and they may have children who are born in the mainland. These people do not have Hong Kong ID cards and they are not qualified to work in Hong Kong. They won't leave Hong Kong for sure because their families are here. And these people will eventually get the two-way permits and become Hong Kong residents. One-way permit and become Hong Kong residents. Will the administration consider approving special types of work visas for these people to unleash their labor force? These people have certain connections with Hong Kong and they are familiar with the local working environment. If you import labor, you'll have to address the accommodation issues of imported labor. I understand that you are concerned about attracting a large influx of people to come to Hong Kong. Perhaps you can only allow those who have obtained the one-way permit since twenty twenty-two to work in Hong Kong to avoid large amount of applications for a one-way permit. I have a question about the Greater Bay Area employment scheme as well. This scheme's original purpose is to encourage local young people to work in the Greater Bay Area and understand the development of our country. I've talked to local employers. One of the employers hired about a hundred twenty local young people, about ten percent of the participants. These young people have great connections with the mainland. They have one-way permit. They were born or they grew up on the mainland. Or they were born in Hong Kong, but they grew up in the mainland and graduated from universities in the mainland and applied through the scheme to get ten thousand dollar subsidy per month. Some of them, their parents lived in the mainland and they go back and forth between the mainland and Hong Kong as they participate in this scheme. About seventy to eighty percent of the participants are these young people that I talked about. So these employers hired about eighty-five percent of these young people. Of course, this scheme is to encourage those who are unfamiliar with the Greater Bay Area to join this scheme. But we've spent over a hundred million dollars on this scheme. So my question is, will you do a background survey on the participants to ensure that you are really encouraging young people who are not familiar with the Greater Bay Area to take part in this scheme, Secretary? On the question about whether the two-way permit holders can work in Hong Kong, well, I don't see any room for this currently. This is about immigration. We are facing manpower shortage. But two-way permit have its own purposes. If you are a two-way permit holder, then you have to meet the requirements and stick to the restrictions. It's hard for us to reach a consensus in, on this issue. So I want to make it clear that two-way permit holders are not allowed to work in Hong Kong. Another question is about the Greater Bay Area Youth Employment Scheme. First, all participants are local young people. Those who are eligible to take part in the scheme are local young people. It's hard for us to differentiate those who are born in Hong Kong or born in the mainland and whether your parents work in the mainland or not. There are various views regarding the scheme. We're not only targeting those who graduated from universities in Hong Kong to take part in the scheme in order to widen the scope of the scheme. But under the pilot scheme, those who are familiar with the mainland may be easier to take the first step to join the scheme. In the long run, as we regularize the scheme, we hope that more and more local young people who studied in Hong Kong or lacked the connections with the mainland to try joining the scheme. I've got in touch with some of the employers and they did recruit young people who were born locally and studied in Hong Kong. We will do some analysis to understand the background of our participants. But I want to say that we did attract those who were originally not familiar with the mainland to join the scheme.
Next, Mister Adam Wong. Thank you very much. It is my own question, one, two, zero. About the Hong Kong Talent Engage, the Top Talents Path Scheme. So I want to know the expenditure. Now, in year two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three, through internal redeployments, the funding would be one point nine three million dollars. For next year, we expect there will be some two point seven million dollars paid. So the expenditure is some four times higher. So I think it is comparable to the workload with more applicants down the road. Well, but I wonder, there are only ten employees redeployed to the Top Talent Engage under the Immigration Department. So what, what is their work, what is their work and what are their qualifications? And also, we need the employment data of the overseas talents imported under the scheme. Well, the services will have to be adjusted according to the difference background of the talents. So are these ten people equipped for that? Now, there are rumors that some people are coming to Hong Kong to give birth under the Top Talents Path Scheme. Well, that's not the original intention of the policy. So are you following up on that? And next, from Doctor Nam An Yu. Question fifty-six about the supplementary labor scheme. Last year, through the scheme, five thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine people have been imported under the scheme. But that is really a very pathetic number. Now, in my, in my sector, that is the accounting sector, we are short eight dozen people. According to the Inland Revenue Department, there were seventy thousand less or seventy thousand fewer tax return filed. And in the long run, there will be thirty, three hundred and seventy thousand tax returns filed down the road. Now, that is some seventy times lower than before. Well, if, if we are keeping to this speed, we will need seventy years to catch up with the labor shortage. So how can we achieve that? Well, if I may add, we are short one hundred thousand people just in the aviation service industry. Thank you very much. I will take the second question first. It would not be comprehensive if you are just looking at the number of labor imported under the supplementary labor scheme. Now, those are generic workers. For the other kind, which are professional and quality talents, they would be imported under the Technology Talent Abortion Scheme and the Top Talents Path Scheme. We are looking at importing at least forty-five thousand such talents in the next three years. So these people will be taxpayers. In Hong Kong, usually people with higher, higher income would pay tax. So we expect the talents to pay more tax. So on one hand, we will be plugging the gap of our talent needs through these schemes. We will be able to meet the need for economic development with them. For supplementary labor scheme, for residential care homes, we have, we have this special scheme to import care workers for RCH. This is a very targeted scheme to meet the need of labor in RCH. And also for logistic workers, the relevant bureaus are working tirelessly to meet the labor demand in these sectors. Now, I would advise the Permanent Secretary to supplement as well. The ten workers in the Talent Engage would be following up on the talents approved to come under the scheme. Thank you. Now, the question was, the question was we are adhering to the same ten-man-strong establishments, but why the expenditure would be much higher in next year? Well, in the past financial year, two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three, this scheme was rolled out towards the end of the year. So it was only one-fourth of salary for a full financial year. So the rank and the qualification of the staff would be the same. They would be responsible for processing applications concerning the information the Talent Engage would be giving us the data. Follow-up question? Yes, very briefly. The secretary said those are labors and those are taxpayers. Well, people who file tax returns and people who actually pay tax are different. There is a niche difference here. We are short three hundred and seventy thousand taxpayers in Hong Kong and that is a concrete figure. Now, you said we have thirty-five thousand people coming through the Top Talents Path Scheme. Well, let's run it up to forty thousand. We are still short three hundred and thirty thousand people. Now, the figure would be fifty-six years to meet the gap. Understood? Okay, next, Miss Judy Chan. Thank you. Two questions. My own question, zero, one. Another member has asked about this as well. The government is compiling a code of practice for employment agencies of F D H. Now, there will only be ever increasing demand for foreign domestic helpers. Every day, there are new conflicts and incidents resulting from poor practice and many employers are not clear about the rules. So I've urged the government to set up a twenty-four-hour hotline to offer conciliation or clarification to employers, domestic helpers, or even the employment agencies. With a call, they can be given a standardized and correct answer. Second question, Doctor, Mr. Charles Su Chong's question, question number twelve. The Labor Department has different plans like the employment program for the elderly and middle-aged and also the Work Orientation and Placement Scheme. Now, compared with year two thousand eighteen to twenty-two, the figure has dropped by half. Well, if you look at the expenditure though, in year two thousand twenty-two, the expenditure has was the doubled of that of year two thousand twenty-one. It's really puzzling. There are only half of beneficiaries, but the expenditure has increased by a double. Why is that? Secretary, may I invite the Commissioner to talk about the expenditure question? Thank you. In year two thousand twenty-two, we were under the epidemic. There were fewer, much fewer service users at our service centers that affected the number of service users at our centers. Secretary? Mister Ho, now concerning the uh the dispersment of training allowance. It would be affected by the
It would be affected by the training period and also the applications, the timing of the applications submitted by the employers. So the fund of redispersments may not tally with the number. So you are saying that the number of participants and the amount of reimbursed training allowances should not tally? Yes, because there is a lag. The amounts would be given to participants completed the program in year 2021. Okay, another question, K P I concerning helping women to join the labor force. Now, the reply is quite vague. You said you would review the efficacy of the program. Well, you have to bear in mind that women are a major resource of our workforce. Now, every time I mention this topic, the secretary would told me you have increased the length of statutory maternity leave from ten weeks to fourteen weeks. There are no other K P Is. Secretary? Thank you. I thank Ms. Chan for her question. Well, I think the level of women's participation in labor is the result of our efforts. However, the reply focused on the efforts of Labor Department, say for example, lengthening or extending the statutory maternity leave. And also in terms of childcare, we are relieving women from housework and childcare pressure and release them to work. Many grassroots families, in many grassroots families, the mother must take care of the child, even if she wants to work and help the family's budget. There are many factors, we understand. Mr. Peter Shih, thank you, Chair. My question is one-one-eight. That is my own question. I would like to respond to Mr. Kwok Wei Kung's point on this special scheme to import care workers for R C H. There are care workers who were treated unfairly and have their wages deducted. I fully understand the situation. I agree with him. I hope the government can step up law enforcement on cracking down unscrupulous practice and punish the employers who use these loopholes to suppress wages for local workers. Well, they are lawbreakers. But it doesn't mean that we have to stop the scheme simply because some people are breaking the law. Or they are robbers, robbing jewelry shops. But should all jewelry shops close down? No. Well, everyone here is saying that there is a shortage of labor in their sector. In my sector, wholesale and retail, we have conducted a survey. So I'm asking this question about manpower development. Under the new round of manpower projection in year 2023 to 24, what will be covered? You said many trades would be covered. The twelve trades would cover my sector as well. So thank you very much. You said the projection would be completed by year, but middle of year 2023 and the results would be available in the third quarter of 2024. Well, before that is available, we have a persisting shortage in every sector in terms of labor. So what can you do to help us? Secretary? Thank you, Mr. Peter Shih. The manpower projection is for our mid-to-long-term work. It doesn't mean that we are not addressing short-term issues. In the policy address announced last October, the Chief Executive told us that there are three major sectors, including my purview, that is the R C H and then construction industry and also transport. Different bureaus are going to report to us the manpower situation in the industries under their purview. In terms of solutions to address manpower shortage, we are looking at different options to address depressing issues before the findings of the manpower projection is available. So we are not sitting on our hands. The projection is simply for our mid-to-long-term policies. Now, with the ramp-up manpower projection, we can have more targeted policies. But we understand that we have to act now.
In the short run, I hope that the administration can seriously do a survey to see how much manpower you are lacking in each sector. While some sectors are trying hard to recruit people, they get candidates. However, these candidates are from other companies from the same sector. Members of the labor industry told me that they hope the administration can unleash the local labor force. In terms of unleashing female labor force, we've talked about it for some twelve times already in Legco. If you have enough manpower, then of course you'll be able to solve the issues. However, we do not have enough manpower, and we're going to have more tourists in the long run. If this issue drags on, how can we ensure the development of Hong Kong in the long run? All of us want to see sustainable development of Hong Kong. We talked about using median income to recruit people from perhaps Shenzhen or other cities in the mainland, and they can return to the mainland after they finish work in the evening. Would you consider this proposal? Thank you. Next, Dr. Wendy Hong, four minutes.
I have a recommendation as well as a question. This recommendation may fall outside the purview of L W B, but this is related to all of us. A lot of members are concerned about the low labor force participation rate. I think that our housing issues is one of the problems. Some entrepreneurs told me that some young people refuse to get pay rise because they want to be allocated public rental housing units. I have visited some citizens as well, and they do not want a pay rise because they are waiting for public rental housing. For those who are in the middle level, that is those who are unable to get public rental housing but are unable to afford private housing, they suffer. I think that L W B should work with the Development Bureau and the Housing Department or Housing Bureau to see how we can offer more options to grassroots families to unleash the labor force of these people. This is a long-term issue, however. My second question is to follow up on the Greater Bay Area Youth Employment Scheme. There are some obstacles hindering the development of the scheme and lowering the attractiveness of the scheme. Young people have to take part in qualifications or other types of examinations. Their length of services or job experiences are not recognized by employers. If you can develop a mutual recognition scheme between the mainland and Hong Kong, I believe it will enhance the attractiveness of the scheme. For the top three employers under the scheme, it's from financial services and accounting services, et cetera. For local young people, these are very good job opportunities. Will you talk to enterprises in the Greater Bay Area to offer relevant job offers or positions to young people participating in this scheme? Secretary?
I've heard her recommendation. I'll reflect the suggestions to the relevant colleagues from the policy bureaus. The other question is about the G B A Youth Employment Scheme. One of the requirements to join the scheme is that you have to have businesses in both the mainland and Hong Kong, and you have to comply with the employment ordinance in Hong Kong. I'm talking about the employers of this scheme. A lot of them, they are in the real estate or financial services sectors. We hope that in the long run, we want to look for I N T businesses from the I N T sector to join the scheme, but they have to have businesses on the mainland. They are popular among young people in Hong Kong, so we do wish to do more in this respect. Also, the question about mutual recognition. If their qualifications are not recognized on the mainland, it will hinder their career development when they return to Hong Kong. Secretary, will you do more in this respect?
We will look into it. As mentioned by Chair, this is a big issue, and the administration has been working on this. This is a structural problem. Hopefully, Secretary can talk to our trade unions regarding this. Next, Mr. Charles Su Chong on supplementary labor scheme. I'd like to express my views and see what responses the administration has. There are misunderstandings in the community regarding this scheme. I've been a member of the Labor Advisory Board for eight years. Imported labors that are admitted to Hong Kong through the scheme, we see several thousands of them. But we see a lot more of these workers in Hong Kong. In 2017, through general labor scheme, some thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-two workers were imported. And through the other schemes, some twelve thousand three hundred and eighty-three workers were imported. And twenty thousand students were admitted to Hong Kong through the graduate scheme. So the imported workers admitted to Hong Kong through the supplementary labor scheme only account for a small number of people imported to Hong Kong every year. We hope that generic workers can be imported through the supplementary labor scheme. Another point I want to clarify on behalf of the Labor Advisory Board. For each application that has to be approved by the board, the number of days we got are only about ten to fourteen days for the approval process. The board did not delay the procedure. We only get ten to fourteen days to approve the applications. Understand that four-week recruitment exercise has to be carried out by the applicant employers. However, I wonder, in terms of the administrative procedures, are there ways to streamline the process? We want to make it more efficient so that the approval time can be compressed. I hope that the Labor Department can do more in this regard. Secretary, anything to supplement?
Mr. Chow has served for a long time in the Labor Advisory Board. I thank him for his suggestions, and I share the same views with him. We will see whether there is room to compress the entire approval procedure to expedite the process. The supplementary labor scheme has been in place for a long time. For employers who have been using this scheme, they are familiar with the procedures already. For the new participants, I believe they would want to learn more about the scheme. That's all for the meeting today. Thank you, Secretary, and your team for attending the meeting today. Thank you all.